Welcome to today's meeting. Thank you all for joining us. We have a packed agenda as we finish out the year and a lot of people in the room who helped us produce a lot of good policies. So we have a lot of thank yous to say as well as we move forward on neighborhood housing and development issues. We will lighten the agenda a little bit. I'm going to ask that the committee continue item number 14, which is the Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance Amendments to our January meeting. And with that, we'll start with approval of the minutes. Do any of my colleagues have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are passed unanimously. We have two items in our packet today which deal with priority items for this community, fighting homelessness and great recognition for our Housing Department from the Arizona NARAW Awards, so encourage everyone to review those. Items five through 10 are for consent action.
Move for approval, items five through 10.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We unanimously approve the consent agenda. And now we're moving on to item 11, smoking in Phoenix public housing.
That was the quickest agenda.
We are very efficient.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the subcommittee. Thank you for the opportunity today to talk to you about implementation of a non-smoking policy in our public housing units. I'm going to take the opportunity first to introduce William Emerson. He is the Deputy Director over Public Housing, so he'll be giving you more of the specifics, but I'm going to start with kind of an overview of how we got to where we are today. So we currently, as a City of Phoenix Housing Department, manage over 1,800 public housing residents for low-income residents in the City of Phoenix. With the exception of our HOPE 6 projects, which are our newest projects, smoking is prohibited in common areas but is allowed in residential units. So what we're talking about today is changing that policy to also not allow smoking within the residence for our public housing units. Some of the reasons why that we're looking at implementing this policy is, of course, we've done surveys of residents and there's national studies out there that says residents prefer, most of the residents, of course, prefer that there is like smoke-free housing available to them. We also know that it improves our tenants' health, which is a big thing for our public housing residents to be able to do that. There's also a reduced financial cost for maintaining units, which is one of the things for us as public housing. As you know, there are insufficient resources to maintain our current operations, and this is one way which we think is a beneficial way, not only to our residents too, but to our staff, to be able to maintain our public housing. And the last thing is that although it's not required by HUD regulations, there is a strong message from HUD that they are encouraging public housing authorities to be able to move to a non-smoking policy. And in fact, you know, seven or eight years ago, there were only a handful, five public housing authorities that had a non-smoking policy. Currently, there are over 500 public housing authorities that have now moved to non-smoking policies. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Emerson.
Thank you, Carl. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee. You may have been surprised to discover that we have smoking in our residences in public housing. I was surprised. Our mission is to provide safe, sanitary, decent housing to people earning less than 80% of the area meeting income. And I think it's uncontroversial that smoking inside of closed spaces is neither safe nor sanitary. It's a Class A carcinogen. A child growing up in an enclosed smoke environment will have inhaled over 100 packs of cigarettes by their fifth birthday. A person breathing the air in an enclosed smoking environment will inhale six times the pollution of somebody standing outside next to the I-10. So it's a Class A carcinogen. There's no way to effectively seal it within a unit, and so it's an unhealthy environment. It's also quite expensive. Leaving aside the costs associated with fires, and smoking is the leading cause of fire in our public housing, it costs, on average, two and a half times as much to turn a smoking unit to prepare it for a new resident and non-smoking resident as a unit without smokers. It can take as long as seven times. And this very conservative estimate of the labor cost alone is $6,000 savings per month. That excludes the cost of replacing counters and carpet and paint. So it's very expensive to continue to have smoking inside enclosed spaces. Finally, it's surprising because our residents would actually prefer a non-smoking environment, 57% of them. A little over a third of our residents smoke. The interesting thing here is that only about one in four of our units have smokers in them. So a number of our smokers already go outside to smoke, and I think that's typical. Among new applicants, they much prefer a smoke-free environment. It's a much more attractive property for them. And something to bear in mind is that we're not at all interested in discriminating against smokers or making smokers feel unwelcome in public housing. We're not allowed to do that by regulation, and it probably wouldn't be effective policy. So we wouldn't maintain separate waiting lists. A no-smoking policy is not a no-smoker policy. If the subcommittee recommends and council adopts a policy that excludes smoking from inside of residences in public housing, we will look forward to having the, all of our properties be smoke-free by June of 2016. We would continue the existing education and cessation efforts that we're doing right now. This past summer, we had 70, over 75 youths participate in a smoke-free leadership program at one of our public housing properties. We would continue that partnership with the Arizona Chapter of the American Lung Association, with the Arizona Department of Health Services, and others involved in Ashline and Smoke-Free Arizona Living. Accordingly, staff recommends that we move towards a no-smoking policy within city-owned public housing units and to allow smoking in designated smoking areas. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your work on this issue. If it's okay with the committee, I will take cards first. Mary Alba Kirth is here from the American Lung Association in support of the agenda item. If you want to join us at the microphone, we would love to get your feedback on our policy. And thank you for your work for Cleaner Air.
Good morning, members of the subcommittee and everybody else. I'm Mary Alba Kirth, speaking today on behalf of the American Lung Association and the Arizona Smoke-Free Living Coalition. We commend the City of Phoenix Housing Department for the presentation today and the subcommittee for considering the transition of the city's public housing communities to becoming smoke-free. Adopting smoke-free rules is the right thing to do for economic, environmental reasons as well as for the safety and health of residents. Adopting smoke-free rules is the, oh, I'm sorry, I already said that part. We're here to offer our support today. The Arizona Smoke-Free Living Coalition provides free services to communities as they adopt smoke-free rules. Our website, azsmokefrieliving.org, offers a wealth of tools and resources for property managers and residents, and our staff actually provides coaching on topics like where to place designated smoking areas and how to enforce the rules. Additionally, the American Lung Association can help with in-person educational talks for residents, and we can make personalized referrals to Ashline, Arizona Smokers Helpline. At one affordable community for older adults this year that went smoke-free in January, we even helped start an onsite support group for residents with chronic lung disease such as asthma and COPD. Thank you for considering this important step for the City of Phoenix. We promise to be active partners from start to finish.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being a partner for us as we perhaps go through this transition. We also have a card in favor available to speak if requested from Wayne Tormalla, who I believe is the Bureau Chief at the Arizona Department of Health Services. So thank you for being here and welcome to speak if you'd like, but we have you marked in support. Any questions from members of the committee?
I do. I think this is a great policy, one that suffers from asthma and didn't realize as I get older, I get worse. And when I'm ever in an environment that smoking is around me, I do sense it immediately. My question is enforcement. How will this be enforced? And what would, is there a penalty fee or what does that look like?
Madam Chair, thank you for the question. Councilwoman Pastor, these tend to be self-enforcing. When people see smoking, they report it. And so we would initially have a personal contact from the property manager onsite with the tenant, and then if the tenant repeats the offense, continues in the offense, abandons the policy, then it would continue to escalate, eventually resulting in eviction, God forbid.
And, Councilwoman Pastor, and that is the policy for any of our lease violations. It would be a lease addendum, which they would sign agreeing not to smoke. So like any other violation that they would create in public housing, they'd go through that same process of hopefully corrective behavior so they can become compliant.
And that's consistent with the recommendation. The recommendation is for a regulation that is relatively easy to comply with. Easy to comply with regulations are more likely to be honored than a much more difficult regulation.
Right. I'm, well, I'm just curious, only because, you know, one violation, you get a warning. Second violation is, is there a, I mean...
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, the second violation would be a notice of lease violation. The third would result in a 30-day notice of eviction, which could then be appealed to informal hearing and then to a formal hearing, at which time, if they enter into an agreement to, okay, I'm done smoking inside, then they would have a reprieve. But if they continue to smoke, then they would eventually be evicted.
And do we offer any, like, intervention programs or provide any intervention programs for those two that are willing, more than willing, to start to want to break the smoking habit? And are there any type of programs like that?
Our Resident Services team is absolutely teed up to roll out education and secession assistance, training, and services in partnership with our community partners.
Well, thank you for your work.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor.
Councilwoman Pastor, I think, I'm glad you asked the questions because I had a couple of questions. What are the, what is the mechanism to enforce, which you were saying it's just like anything else that has to be enforced in public housing? So there's already something in place that's consistent, which I think helps. And the other is, because I'm thinking about some of our seniors who are in public housing who've been there for decades and who smoke and, you know, though I am supportive of this because this is important for a healthier Phoenix, I want, you know, you go tell that person who's been there for decades, you tell them that they can't smoke anymore. But it sounds like there is, there are programs and people are willing to go and help people break the habit of smoking.
Thank you for those comments, Councilman Valenzuela. We've considered that very carefully, and that's why we're not recommending a completely smoke-free campus. For seniors to walk off the property, there are a number of concerns. We've not regulated smoking inside of public housing in 70 years, so this is a cultural change. That's part of enforcement as well. It's a cultural change. So there will be a lot of education. You'll note in your council packet that we are recommending the designated smoking areas be 25 feet away from public entrances, but also, especially in these senior properties, out on the balcony with the door closed. So for our seniors and disabled who are not able to walk that distance very easily, they're much more likely to comply, and that fixes most of our policy issues. And they'll, it's also less onerous on them. At the same time, we'll provide cessation counseling.
Yeah. And I am for, I'm all for this policy change. I think it's important, like, as I mentioned, as I said, for a healthier Phoenix, it's important for everyone. I too, like Councilwoman Pastor just mentioned, I don't smoke, but I, you know, I can be just, you know, 10 feet away from it, and I can, I can tell you someone is smoking, not because I smell it, it's just something about it. It affects me, and I'm, I know I'm not the only one. So I think this is important. I'm glad that we are doing this responsibly and also with some sensitivity for, you know, some people who've been smoking for a very long time and were, you know, I think we're doing the right thing by their neighbors as well. So thank you.
Thanks, sir. That was also one of the interesting things was that when we did our survey, even though there were, you know, our units that, people that smoked when they're in public housing, about a quarter of them wanted to quit. And we're, I guess, we're looking forward to that, maybe that push and that, those supportive services cessation programs to be able to help them quit smoking, because most people know, even though they do smoke, that it's probably unhealthy for them to do it.
I think we're ready for a motion.
I move for approval of staff recommendation.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Stay right where you are for housing choice vouchers.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about how I think and how we think we can end chronic homelessness in the Valley. But first, I want to take the opportunity to introduce Elizabeth Morales. She is our Housing Manager overseeing our Section 8 program. So once again, we get to the details of how this program will work, she will be presenting that particular portion. So over the last year, so the goal that we have before you is that by December of 2016, to end chronic homelessness in the City of Phoenix and in the Valley. Once again, this is not a City of Phoenix issue. This is a regional issue where there are numerous regional partners. Over the last year, you've been hearing that as part of the subcommittee presentations, and there was actually a report today, there are joint reports from the Housing Department and from the Human Services Department related to what our efforts are from the city's perspective regarding trying to end chronic homelessness. So you've heard about our success in eliminating chronic homelessness for veterans. That's one of the biggest success we have. That's nationwide. We are the first city to be able to do that. You've also heard about our efforts at our Watkins Overflow Shelter to be able to place women and families into stabilized housing. And you've also heard last month about the proposal to close the Men's Overflow Shelter. Those are all mechanisms of what we're looking to be able to do to end chronic homelessness. And why are we talking to you about this? This is the crucial next step that we need, is to be able to provide housing resources for this effort valley-wide. And why is it important? Because right now, although there are numerous individuals that are homeless in the Valley, only 15% are considered chronic homeless in the Valley. So when you encounter people that are homeless, most people think that they've been on the streets for a long time. Most of them are not. Those that are determined to be chronic homeless are only 15% of the population, but that 15% uses 50% of the homeless resources in the Valley. So that is why we're looking to try to address this issue, is how do we prioritize those resources and how do we reduce the amount that we're able to dedicate towards this resource of providing stabilized housing? Why we know it's successful? The first one up there is, of course, is the functional zero for chronic homeless veterans in December of 2013. The second thing that we've learned as part of VASH is housing first. And why housing first is important is previously, what you had to do is you had to be substance-free, you had to be criminal-free, you had to have all of these provisions to be able to provide housing. What this now says is that you get housing and we provide the wraparound supportive services. And that's the key to this presentation and this discussion, is that these vouchers that we're looking to be able to dedicate towards chronic homeless are under the assumption or the requirement that they actually have the supportive services necessary to make it successful. How we know that's successful? Not only in VASH, we've been able to have 92% of the people that were placed in permanent supportive housing, that were deemed chronic homeless, were able to sustain housing one year later after being placed in the housing. We also know there was a couple of things that talk about, I call it from the monetary impact of what we're doing. The first is that there was a FUSE project, which is the Frequent Users Systems Engagement. And what it did, it took 13 of the highest users of the St. Joseph's Medical Hospital facilities, and they put them into permanent supportive housing. So these are the people that, on a daily basis, in most cases, were showing up in emergency rooms. After 24 months, 94% of those participants were still in their subsidized housing. They were, they had a 73% reduction in ER visits and a 73% reduction in the ER cost. That tells us that that system of housing first works. The other thing that we were able to do from a regional perspective is there was a pilot between the Valley of the Sun United Way and the City of Tempe, where there were 35 homeless individuals that were placed in stabilized housing. Of those 35, 19 had a diagnosis of serious mental illness, SMI, the most difficult population to be able to serve. One year later, 89% or 31 of those 35 individuals are still housed. There was a one-third reduction. Only one-third of them had emergency visits, and the individuals reduced emergency costs by 68%. So we know that this model works. We have proven success for that, and now what we're looking to do is to make those next steps. Of course, this is not, this is a coordinated effort. Once again, as I mentioned when I started, this is not something that the City of Phoenix can take on. It starts at the federal level. So in 2010, the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness published Opening Doors, which is a strategic plan from the federal government coordinating the resources of 19 different federal agencies to help address chronic homelessness. Also, the big, one of the big players in there besides the VA is HUD, which is the funder of our public housing and our Section 8 programs. And they've identified the guidelines and the administrative processes that allow us as housing authorities to be able to support this. So unlike VASH with veterans, they gave new resources to be able to address veterans' homelessness. What they're asking us to do as public housing authorities is reassign and realign our resources that we currently have to be able to end chronic homelessness. So they're not giving us new resources, but they're saying there are ways to do this, and one of those things will be talked about by Liz on how we can create those preferences to be able to dedicate Section 8 vouchers to address chronic homelessness. The other thing is that then we were, as one of 25 cities, selected to try to address this from a nationwide perspective. They looked at our success with the veterans programs, and they asked us, as one of 25 cities, to lead this resource ending chronic homelessness within our region, with the goal of building and strengthening coordinated assessment, strengthening the data around that, and then being able to integrate the resources for the chronic homeless community. Because one of the things that became difficult that we learned under VASH is you need to be able to identify who they are and be able to put the supportive services around there. If you don't touch them and then get them engaged in services, they tend to move, and they tend to be a migrant population, which is harder for us to be able to address. And so where we may think that there are more people that are chronic homeless, they may just be being counted in different areas. So that is the important thing that we're looking to be able to do. And then two key elements from a local target perspective. So the takedown issue is we believe that if we can identify resources to be able to house 55 new families on a monthly basis, that over the next six, over the next 24 months, that we can end chronic homelessness. Two of the key components that are now in place are, one is a coordinated assessment. So what that means is that there is one tool that has been identified region-wide that consistently assess a person's needs, their issues, and what's the appropriate intervention? Because once again, not everybody needs permanent supportive housing. There are things like RAPGRI housing, there are things like just assistance to be able to keep their utilities and their rental payment, and they can stay in their housing. So assuming the appropriate intervention is the most important thing that we can be able to do from a region-wide perspective, because what we're asking to do is prioritize those that are most vulnerable. So similar to an emergency room, when you walk into an emergency room, you may have been there for three hours because you have a broken arm, and you may be the next person up, but if somebody comes in with a heart problem or something, they get bumped to the first of the list. And that's kind of the theory behind this one. It's those people that need the most intervention are the people that we need to address most quickly. And the other part that's important is what's called, you know, the assessment hubs. And so right now, through United Methodist Outreach Ministries and the Human Services Campus, we have established hubs for families and individuals to be able to be assessed so that we know region-wide what the most important people are that we're looking to be able to address. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Morales.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the subcommittee. I would like to discuss the implementation of the policy to prioritize the housing choice vouchers for chronically homeless. Nationally, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, has provided guidance and best practices on how public housing agencies like ourselves can engage in the effort to end chronic homelessness. Based on what we have learned, we have developed a framework on how the City of Phoenix can be a partner in this effort. Historically, the Section 8 waitlist has been based on preferences and date and time order of application. HUD permits preferences to be established to allow eligible individuals and families to move ahead of other families on the waitlist. Based on HUD guidance, the Housing Department modified, with public input, our administrative plan to create a preference that allows us to serve the chronically homeless as a priority and allows the Housing Department to be a contributor to this regional effort. We have learned that providing housing is not enough to serve this vulnerable population. For that reason, we would require that any use of housing choice voucher program would be, I'm sorry, that it would require that they also do a permanent supportive housing model along with the use of the vouchers. The permanent supportive housing model is used for vulnerable populations like the chronically homeless who need long-term services to secure and maintain permanent and stable housing. Nationwide, studies have shown a success rate, as Carl mentioned, low 80s to high 90s for chronic homeless individuals that are placed in permanent supportive housing for a year or longer. In order to implement the permanent supportive housing model, the Housing Department will want to issue an RFP to select an organization that has experience and capacity to provide the wraparound services along with the vouchers. Services for the, for the population are extremely important for the success and retention of the individual in housing. In general, services that will be provided to all individuals include obtaining mainstream benefits like Social Security, SSI, accessing medical and behavioral health services, and working on developing those daily living skills that are needed that they have lacked for being chronically homeless. And finally, provide that peer support that is also called navigators, that really help support the individual and help them navigate through the service needs and systems that are out there. So Steph, we request that the Housing, that your recommendation and authority to dedicate up to 275 vouchers or 5% of our voucher allocation. We currently administer approximately 5,500 vouchers with a turnover of 250 to 300 a year. The 275 vouchers we are committing would most likely not be fully utilized in the first year, but it is an appropriate portion of the voucher allocation that can utilize towards this important goal to end homelessness by 2016. We also ask for your support to issue a request for a proposal to contract with the appropriate agency or agencies that will provide the critical services to help the individual to become stable and have the quality of life that we all want. With that, we would be happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. We have one card on this item, so if it's okay with my colleagues, I will invite former councilmember Craig Trippkin up.
Thank you, Matt. Is this on? Thank you, Madam Chair and councilmembers. I just have a question more than anything. Is there, it appears to me there's no Housing Commission anymore. At one time, there was, and I believe city code requires that there be a Housing and Neighborhoods Commission. And since the Community Development Block Grant, the Community Development Committee, which allocates CDBG money or makes the recommendations, is supposed to be comprised of several members of the Housing Commission, I am wondering if we have a Housing Commission anymore that is, in fact, supplying those members to that committee, people who are involved actively with some of these policies that you're talking about? That's my question. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Councilman Trippkin. We have instituted, with HUD guidance, we have what's called the Assistant Housing Governing Board, who serves as our council and one member of the public. And so that is our governing body and our commission that we use to be able to actually do public policy around public housing. So there is not a Human Service Commission, Housing Commission at this point.
I would like more information on that because I think that it is required unless the rules have changed. So I would, before we, I would like to know about that before we move forward. So if somebody, and what I mean by before we move forward, somebody can look quickly and to know if we're in compliance?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, I can tell you that HUD recognizes our city council as our Board of Commissioners because we're a housing authority that's under a city government. So, you know, I am aware that we're not the only city in the country that has that structure.
Looks like we're doing some research, but I have a couple of things we want to discuss about this particular program. So the three of us all represent areas where there are a lot of people with Section 8 vouchers right now, and we've, at least I've heard from my constituents, that they want to make sure that this is a success and that people going into the community have the, that supportive services also include programs to be a good neighbor. This is a population where they may have never had a great role model, and just understanding what neighbors expect will make it a success for them and for the neighbors. So I hope that if we do move forward with the motion today, that the motion will explicitly include that the supportive services include education about good neighbor and support for people to continue that. I think if they have a neighborhood that welcomes them and feels like they're a great member, this will and feels like they're a great member, this will be a much more likely, probably more likely to succeed. But that is important to us as a council to make sure that we're giving people the tools they need in this particular area. It's something we face as a challenge, at least in my district. We've had lots of questions about folks moving in with Section Eight vouchers to HOA communities that have a whole lot of rules that confuse those of us who are very familiar with them but are even more challenging in other situations. And if someone is coming in without ever having a stable home, that's another boundary that we need to help them. So if you could speak to that and whether that type of education will be part of the supportive services.
Councilmembers of the subcommittee, absolutely. We know that those are sometimes, you know, when they've been living on the streets in the general three, four, or five years, that they may not have had stable housing, that those are important things to make them successful and also make them, as you call it, good neighbors. So yes, there are requirements for tenant orientation and tenant rights education. There will be ones related around, you know, meal preparation and nutritional guidelines and how to use transportation, how to comply with the rules related to your housing, wherever it's an apartment complex or in a house. But absolutely, that is one of the most important things that we can do. So it's not just the, you know, the medical side. That's kind of what the caseworker ends up doing. But the navigator services are those day-to-day living and independent living skills that are necessary for our chronic homeless residents to become successful. So absolutely, they will be included.
If folks are going into homeowners association communities, there'll be education about those rules, which are sometimes, I mean, I can't say that all of the rules make sense, but that's something we've been facing more and more often, given the change in where in our economy and so.
Members of the subcommittee, absolutely. And we're actually, based on the previous conversation, we are actually looking to do that with all of our Section Eight residents in a more focused way, not just, you know, the population that would potentially receive these vouchers. Because it's important for everyone that is moving into communities to understand that and know that.
Thank you. I do think that will help this program be much more successful in Section Eight in general. Just if people are talking more often and getting more education, it really can solve a lot of the concerns our residents have been sending our way. Councilmember questions?
I have a question. And it's towards that placement and the clustering of it. And how would that look like in the placement? Because if we're asking for wraparound services, it sounds like it would be, I don't want to use the term, would be maybe an apartment complex, a home where there are several applicants that may be chronic homelessness. And so I think we need to be very cautious and cognizant of how we roll this out within the community. And a key effort would be definitely education, education, education in what is required, how we, I don't even know how we interact with one another, interact within our community, because we do have some challenges in that area. But what, first question is placement. My second question is about the RFP. And it says to provide necessary supportive services. I would like, in a very innovative way, is to look at this RFP and have many different services. An RFP that goes to many different services that can apply so that an applicant has a choice of what type of service they want with a different entity. So very much, very similar to Access, where you enter the Access arena, and then you're able to have choices of how, of what services and who you want to go to. So I would like to see in this RFP choice not just one major entity receiving the RFP. So I don't know if we could talk offline about it, but I would like to start seeing more choice for people participating.
Councilwoman Pastor, thank you, you know, for those questions. And related to, you know, to the RFP, there will be an entire list of services. And as all we're looking for is someone to facilitate those services. Because currently, as, if we issue a Housing Choice voucher, there are no requirements for services around there. So there would be a prescriptive list. But as we talked, as I talked or mentioned earlier, is part of this issue is coordinated assessment, which means every person has a different intervention that is needed, a different set of services that are needed. And there is no one provider in the city that provides all that range of service. However, there are folks that are used to coordinating those resources between multiple organizations. And that's what really makes it successful for us, is that one is we're not in the business of providing services as a housing authority, but we need entities that are successful and understand what interventions are necessary. And they have those, those service providers that they can access to be able to determine what is needed for each of those individuals. So that's what we're looking for as part of this RFP, is not trying to contract for seventeen different services. What we're looking for is somebody that can do the coordinated assessment, that can determine what that resident needs, and then provide all those necessary services throughout the community that are going to be needed.
So I don't know if I'm stating, looking in my, in my mind, maybe it's several different coordinators, because several different coordinators work with many different providers. So.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, I'd like to add is that the services that we're describing are, have been set by our regional continuum of care on homelessness, on what are the standards of services that are most appropriate for chronic homeless. So that is going to be our guidelines, because those are proven strategies that we know have worked in other communities. And to address your question on placement, you know, my experience has been intent-based rental assistance to serve chronic homeless with serious mentally ill. And those have always been placed throughout the community, throughout Maricopa County. So placement is most important based on the needs of the individual. The navigators have been very instrumental in the programs we've worked thus far in placing them with one landlord who understands the population. And those landlords are very responsive when there are issues to address, to ensure that neighbors and residents are safe and not dealing with problem residents. So placement is critical. It's based on individual needs. It's still a choice of the individual. And it's, again, scattered throughout our community. And it's been very successful with other programs that have been operating for twenty years in the valley.
So, yeah, so for the first part, yes, we will follow the standards. And yes, we will follow the services within those standards. I guess what I'm saying is I want us to start pushing and looking outside the box of offering RFPs to several different coordinators that operate with many different services. You know, one may be Mercy Care, one may be, Magellan used to be the state one for a while, you know. But it's not all one huge, it's not all just one contractor. So that's, that's the vision that I'm, I don't know if it's possible.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, I would say this is the best time. Right now, we have several providers who have been trained and are part of our homeless continuum in providing services. So I'm very confident that there are numerous organizations who can do this work.
Thank you. We have a card from Brad Ridwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council, and city staff. As you know, I was one of the couple of key leaders in the Project H3 Vets Initiative, which is what really this model is based on, along with the others, kind of special initiative pilots that we've done to learn about this process. And you obviously know the success of that. The, as to the issue of having choice in your system, right? The chronically homeless person needs multiple layers of services. We call the support services "navigators" because their job is to navigate the individual through the myriad system resources, which includes access, which includes Social Security disability VA benefits, and a variety of others, the mental health system, all of that enrollment. So, you know, when we first encounter a chronically homeless individual, twenty percent of the time, they have an SMI diagnosis, serious mental illness. There's a whole wealth of resources and choice available in the mental health system for an individual if they're actually eligible. What we see is after, after six months in Housing First, that enrollment in SMI jumps to sixty percent. Those individuals were not able to navigate the systems while they're living on the streets. So I would strongly encourage that you adopt this. I strongly encourage that, that we know how to do this. We're done piloting. There is no more pilot to do. So, you know, this isn't an experiment. It's a proven path. And then finally, don't dilute your support services contractor. So what I'm hearing, being asked, is to have multiple providers come in and be part of the service package. And maybe this group does fifty guys, this group does another fifty. I strongly encourage have an open competitive process. There are agencies that absolutely know how to provide the services, and that choice is built into the navigator model. So, thank you.
So I'm not saying to not have an open process. I believe in a competitive process. I am just saying, and maybe you kind of gave me clarity, maybe it's the navigators. I'm just saying, as, as me as an individual saying, going into a system, would like to be able not to be tied to whatever the government has given me within that one choice. And the only choice I have is one choice. And so that's just, I'm, I'm just opening up the conversation. I think we, my colleagues and I believe in this and will move this forward. It's just for me to express myself in the sense of the RFP of how I was envisioning or.
That helps clarify. Choice is, is the top priority principle in terms of Housing First. It has to operate on self-selection into services. So the navigator provides that, and they work on the priority of the individual as they describe at the time. And so, you know, they may not be worried about their treatment needs today. They might just be worried about their Social Security benefits. And that's the system the navigator is going to help them connect to. Meanwhile, taking every opportunity to engage around things like substance abuse substance abuse treatment needs. And as an individual meets their basic, really immediate needs and the things that are really concerning to them, right? Then they're, they're able to start to mentally shift to longer-term thinking. And it's when that thinking occurs that we have a movement towards the healthier behaviors, reduction in substance abuse. And I'll just share with you, we talk about this, the Housing First model, and somebody can come in and be, you know, intoxicated and, you know, sometimes people can take that the wrong way. It is a mental health intervention, this process. And after six months, I'm going to give you at entry and after six months of being in a Housing First project. The, those with primary care physician at entry were twenty-four percent. Those with primary care after six months, seventy percent. Those who had planned a healthcare visit, so again, getting away from the ER use, right? Fifty-three percent jumped to eighty percent. Those who self-described as abusing drugs and alcohol were seventy-one percent at entry, dropped down to twenty percent after just six months. Those who had reported drinking alcohol every single day for the prior thirty days dropped from twenty-three percent to zero percent. Injection drug use from fourteen percent to zero percent. Those receiving treatment for their drug and alcohol issues went from fourteen percent to forty percent. Those with a SMI diagnosis went from twenty-three percent up to sixty percent. And again, that's from accessing healthcare. Those receiving treatment for their mental health conditions jumped from nineteen percent to fifty percent. And those who had been a victim of a violent attack in the prior six months dropped from twenty-nine percent to zero. It's healthier, it's safer, it's the right policy for the city, and it's the right, right thing to do in reprioritizing five percent. Five percent to go end chronic homelessness. So, thank you.
I want to thank you for educating us, because then it is a solid model. And we now, I mean, we recognize that it's a solid model. I just wanted to make sure choice was there. And so now that you educated, I am very, not that I wasn't proud of this, but now you answered my question, so thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
Mr. Ridwell, with all due respect to our city staff, because you know how I feel about our city staff and our partners. The last thirty seconds of your time is the highlight, I think, of the overall presentation, because that is what it's about. For any of the viewers who are watching, trying to figure out what it is we're trying to do, and people are afraid, you know, about the placement and the Section Eight placement. And first, I would, you know, I think that that is what it boils down to. It works, and I really, really appreciate that. And an opportunity to meet with Matthew Doherty, the Director of National Initiatives, he's out of DC, with our city staff. And to listen to this person tell me that Phoenix is becoming a model of how, of how these things come together. And in Phoenix as a city, the City of Phoenix, but the partnership that we have with all of these agencies, all of the stakeholders of this city, together, this is, this is becoming a model. Of course, I took that opportunity to ask for funding, because otherwise I wouldn't be doing, you know, my, my job and, and our job. I mean, that's, it's part of the deal. That's what we do for our city. But, but, you know, that was a great meeting to have. It was a great conversation to have. Appreciate the presentation. Many people may not realize that families that are on Section Eight housing are complying with more rules than probably what most people have to go through living with an HOA. And people are thinking, you know, I don't want Section Eight housing in my neighborhood, and what is it going to mean for my neighborhood? There's a very good chance they're going to be the most compliant neighbors you have because they're, you know, these families are already working within those, those rules. I am, you know, I'm supportive. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Greg Stanton, our mayor, deserves a lot of credit for putting this out in the forefront, just homelessness in general. But, you know, his focus is, is around the veteran homelessness. And so I want to give Mayor Stanton's credit, along with our city staff, for just being focused from the very beginning, staying focused every day. Of course, I, I don't, I don't think I'm alone. While I have the utmost respect and gratitude for our veterans, we can't stop there. There are a lot of, you know, there are a lot of people who are homeless, a lot of families. And what, you know, the, the, the people that I think that we need to be most focused on are our kids, our youth, or we have a lot of teen homelessness. And, and I know that we're getting there. I know that we're working with Tumbleweed and One in Ten and many other organizations to help, you know, move that agenda forward as well. So that being said, if you want to motion, Madam Chair, if you're ready for motion.
Do we have any additional information about Councilwoman Pastor's question?
Yes, we do have Dan Brown here with us that can speak to the commission.
Councilman Trippkin's question.
Good morning. How are you? Chairman Gallego, or chairperson Gallego and Councilman Valenzuela and Councilmember Pastor. So the answer to the question is, the Commission on Neighborhoods and Housing exists. It's Section two dash two zero one in the city code. So the structure for the commission exists. If it is the policy direction of the subcommittee and council, staff can come back and we can work with council to appoint members and have it proceed. That's, so it exists, but it would just need to move forward with appointments.
Is it required?
It is not required.
Okay.
It is a structure that exists. It is a structure that exists. The way the code, uh, is written, um, it's a structure that exists to address these sorts of issues. But it's at the direction and the policy of the council to do so.
Perhaps the Subcommittee could ask Councilwoman Pastor to, uh, meet with staff offline and provide a recommendation to us on...
Sure.
The future of that commission.
Very good.
So you, do you need a direction from me or you, you're fine? You know where we're going.
Yes.
All right. I just, I'm clear, protocol, however it works.
Perfect. And thank you for coming down and helping us understand this. We're solving problems in real time today.
No problem.
Thank you. Wonderful. We will look forward to your recommendation on, and maybe we can learn a little bit about the history and what it, the highlights of the commission and how it's became, how it sunset.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
And could we, uh, would you take a friendly amendment?
Yes, I would, on the education...
Yes.
Piece of it.
Support services include. Perfect. Thank you.
So are we clear on the motion? Okay. I just want to be sure because, um, you mentioned that at the very beginning of this item and I just want to make sure that it's all a part of that.
We're clear.
It'll be the education piece. Okay.
Support services include education about good neighbor programs. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you all for your work on this and congratulations to the mayor and all involved. With the committee's permission, I would like to take item 15 out of order. It appears to me that about half the people in the room are here for blight lien ad hoc committee update. Would that, do we need a motion or? Would you? Thank you. Thank you everyone for their flexibility. I had estimated the time this would start and I was off. We were solving problems, so it's good that...
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Subcommittee, we're here to provide an update on the blight lien ad hoc committee. As you know, we were last here in June to discuss our blight lien process and opportunities for improvement in the process as well as in possible collections of those liens. This Subcommittee recommended and the mayor appointed a ad hoc blight committee. The Councilwoman Gallego co-chaired it along with Mark Manoyal, who's a real estate attorney who also co-chaired. So I want to thank you both for your leadership on that very effective ad hoc committee. In addition, I'd like to thank, I think we have another five members of the ad hoc committee in attendance to hear today. I'd like them to raise their hand to be recognized. They were very efficient in the work that they did. So we are here today to provide a summary of the recommendations and efforts of, of those recommendations that came out of the ad hoc committee. So I, here with me today are Tim Bowling, who's our Deputy Director over our code compliance efforts. And he did the, the omen's work in producing, uh, the presentations and, and, and leading this. And so I'm going to ask him to do the same here for you today. Tim?
Hey, Chris. Direct your attention to the PowerPoint. The committee was charged with, with really three things. Standard application of abated properties and on how we enforce those. Um, and I did want to mention the enforcement staff, Patrick Ravenstein and Gary New are here today. They do an outstanding job on about 2,000 abatements each year. Then we also wanted the, the committee to look at appropriate outreach and communication. When we have an, a blighted property that we're working on with abatement, how are we communicating to the neighbors and others that the property is, um, is in process and that we're working on it. And then third, examine and make recommendations regarding the, the funds that we have. We put a lien on the property, a blight lien on the property after we've abated it. And quite frankly, we're losing a lot of those monies, uh, foreclosure on tax liens. What the committee, the committee met three times and it were very effective meetings and we provided information and it kind of got right, right to the work at hand. The first recommendation was to modify the neighborhood preservation ordinance is, is in respect to the board up standards. Right now, we board up properties, all openings with three-quarter inch plywood. And, um, they can present somewhat of a blight on the property. They secure the house or the structure so that that creates, that eliminates the public safety hazard to it. But it, it doesn't look as great. Just on this picture right here, we have, this is a boarded up house, um, in, uh, in, in a neighborhood. And you can see the wood there gets tagged up with graffiti. What the recommendation is to change that to a polycarbonate material after 90 days. So we don't, would only allow boards up for 90 days. After 90 days, you'd have to change it to a polycarbonate material. This is the same structure once we've removed the wood and put the polycarbonate material up there. And if you drive down the, the street, you really can't tell that that house is vacant at all. That was the first recommendation. The second recommendation was to post a notification on the property that City of Phoenix is working on it. Now we, we post a, after the property is cleaned up and we're going to stop doing that. The committee recommended stop doing that, maybe draw attention to the property. But we will post it, um, once we start working on it and during the abatement. Once it's done, then we'll remove the sign. And then the third recommendation was to create a pilot program to address unpaid blight liens. Again, there's the picture of the property. And then with that, we open it for discussion, uh, to the panel on, um, a blight lien program.
I want to echo the thanks offered earlier to our committee members. We met, we had a lot of people with really impressive expertise who were able to offer their time to their city. Some of the, the top minds in our city and I appreciate your attention. This is an issue that seems to predominantly affect our lower income areas. And I think they appreciate that so many great minds were willing to step in and say, we want all of our neighborhoods to look good. And that we want to do a better job making sure the work we are already doing is out in the community. So that when we do have a home that was burnt and, and is sitting vacant, that people are aware that we are following and respecting private property rights and trying to work with the homeowner before we began abatement. But so many people in the community were saying, are you doing anything? Do, do you know something is wrong here? And so now we will have signs while that process is ongoing. And perhaps those signs will inspire one neighbor to get in touch with the homeowner and, and help us speed along. I'm also hopeful that our, our pilot in this area will help us get homes back out onto the market. Get, find people who will come in, invest those homes so that it'll be a win for our city budget and for safer communities. This is something that is a problem throughout our community. But the three districts we represent have a particularly high concentration of open vacant properties. Glad that the mayor was able to support this Subcommittee's work and, and create this great citizens committee and that we were able to find some solutions that I think will make a difference for communities that are in need of help from the city. So thank you to the many people who spent their late nights helping us on this particular item. Many people are in the audience from the committee and I would welcome them. If you wanted to, um, provide any insight on any of the recommendations, to come up and fill out a card when you are done. We do want to recognize our co-chairman and all the members of the committee for their insights and expertise.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I would also like to recognize Lena Cruz. She kind of coordinated all the activities, made all the arrangements, um, reserved the facility and, and brought refreshments for everybody there. She did an outstanding job coordinating communication with the committee members.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, we're prepared to come back next month if, with the support of this Subcommittee to further delve into the details of that third recommendation in particular about what it would entail to, to create a foreclosure pilot program. Some of the recommendations around that from the task force, uh, the Subcommittee, Ad Hoc Committee included, looking at risk, uh, the ability to have a cost recovery model. This has really opened our eyes to a lot more data than we've ever looked at before as we look at our blight liens and recovery. And we're finding out lots of good information that we're prepared to present to the Subcommittee next month as it pertains to that recommendation. And additionally, just while we have the, the time, you mentioned a lot of the improvements that we've noted of our open vacancies out in the property, in the communities, which are our most vulnerable for health and safety type issues. So we encourage any listeners out there to call 534-4444, to go to phoenix.gov to report any blighted structures that it could be a hazard to their community.
Wonderful. And we did speak through the committee and, and offline about making sure we improve communication between the fire department and neighborhood services when we do have a fire at a, a property which we suspect is, is vacant. So I don't know if there's anything to add to that, but that was something the community very much wanted to make sure we prioritized.
Chairwoman, we have communication with the fire department on a regular basis. We had a system set up in place. It lagged just a little bit because of some of the individuals that were communicating back and forth. But we've reinstated that back with the fire department. So we get notification once a, a fire occurs on a residential property.
Perfect. Thank you. And, and we hear Councilman Noah Kowski tested the polycarbonate material for us, went out with a hammer and would welcome any, any other of my colleagues who need to do their own research on the polycarbonate material to, to do the same. Any questions or shall we? Well, thank you again to our Subcommittee and to our staff for a lot of hard work on this process. Item 13 is our historic preservation plan for...
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, I'm, uh, proud here this morning to introduce Michelle Dodds and Erica Finn-Broughton with our Historic Preservation Office to talk about our, the city's first ever comprehensive historic preservation plan. Prior to this time, there was one goal and some language within the overall city's general plan that dealt with historic preservation. So this is our first overall comprehensive plan and Michelle and her team have done an excellent job and I'll let them walk us through it.
Chairwoman, members of the Subcommittee, I just want to, um, recognize Erica Finn-Broughton. She managed the, the, the program and has brought it thus far to you today. And so I just want to give her some special recognition before we start. And so you might ask, why a historic preservation plan? Well, first of all, we would like to build on Plan Phoenix, the efforts and all the community outreach that was done as part of that plan. And this historic preservation plan utilizes the same five core values as well as the same tools that Plan Phoenix is utilizing. Except for, uh, we have I Preserve Phoenix rather than I Plan Phoenix as things individuals can do to help move the plan forward. It also sets priorities. We had a lot of community input, public meetings, surveys. And so we received a lot of input and that helps us prioritize. We got a lot of requests. We end up responding a lot to issues as they arise. And we want to really get ahead of it and kind of set some priorities so we can focus and, and respond, uh, more efficiently. Also, it creates public awareness. Some people have asked why so much information and background is in the plan. But we really think it's important in order to create, uh, public awareness to have a document that is comprehensive and, and, and lays the groundwork for a good understanding of what preservation does. And lastly, we really want it to provide some guidance for decisions in the future. We think it will be helpful that this is a document that's available online and, and we will, uh, keep it online and available. And you may ask, what's in the plan? Well, the benefits of historic preservation are in there, the legal basis for preservation, the history of Phoenix, the history of preservation in Phoenix, and then an overview of our program. The moving forward section, the part that, uh, we had a lot of community input on, created a vision and a mission statement. And, uh, the five goals of the plan. The five goals of the plan are to protect archaeological resources. Even though our city archaeologist is out at Pueblo Grande Museum and part of the Parks and Recreation Department, archaeology is part of the, uh, Chapter 8 of the zoning ordinance on, on preservation. And so we really wanted to lead with that, that goal. And also, uh, protect historic resources, explore preservation incentives, develop community awareness, and promote partnerships. We all saw those as very important. And each of those have, have goals and actions, uh, that go with them. Again, to reiterate the public input, uh, we had four meetings in the public and, with the public. And we, uh, had a survey of stakeholders that were identified by our commission. And just to point out, we do have our Vice Chair of our Historic Preservation Commission here today, Bill Schill. Again, the link to the plan is provided on our website. And so with that, um, you know, we are here to seek the Subcommittee's recommendation of approval on the plan. And answer any questions you may have.
Wonderful. If it's okay with the members of the Subcommittee, maybe we can start hearing from our Vice Chairman, Bill Schill.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, I would just add, while Mr. Schill walks up here, that it was approved by eight of the Village Planning Committees and the Historic Preservation Commission. And those eight are the ones that have historic districts in them. So it has broad spread, unanimous support at all those levels.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gallego, members of the Subcommittee. Uh, I am here just to, uh, affirm that the nine members of the Historic Preservation Commission enthusiastically support this plan. We did a lot of public outreach to get, uh, input from the public. We, one of our goals is to continue to expand, uh, the designated historic neighborhoods. And certainly we want to, uh, get those into, uh, West Phoenix and Maryvale, which, uh, has a rich history and needs, uh, more, uh, attention to its historic heritage. And, uh, we're being creative in a time of, uh, limited resources of how we can accomplish those goals without, uh, impacting the city budget. So again, on behalf of the commission, um, we ask that you support our historic preservation plan for the next 10 years. Thank you.
I know this is a priority of Councilwoman Pastor's, so maybe we'll start with hers.
Can we look at Goal 3 where it says, explore preservation incentives? I know that what happens in the historic, uh, areas is that we'll have a, well, I have one, detached garage where, uh, I look at that and I'm like thinking, what can I do with that other than, um, parking my car in there? And so I start to look at what could, how creative and innovative can I be? And I know that several of my, um, neighbors or people within that area would want to demolish, uh, the detached garage and would like to build a larger, um, area or, or use that to build, uh, something different to add more space. Due to the fact that our homes are very, very small and don't have storage. And I totally get that concept. But I would like to add something in the, in, in here or explore, uh, in the incentive area of how we encourage homeowners to preserve, uh, that area. But also be able to, uh, solve one of their, their situations or issues that they are facing. And so I would like to introduce some language. And I want to preface this with, I know there are some that are, uh, slightly cautious about the language, but it's more to, it's, it's for of us to explore for more opportunities. And, um, so the language that I would like to put in there is, um, explore zoning ordinance changes to encourage preservation of historic structures over demolition. So that we don't completely demolish, uh, a perfect, beautiful, uh, structure that we could probably add an incentive and figure out how we could work with it. One of the homes, and I'm not, it's not necessarily, I don't think it's a historic, it's a historic home, but they're adding on to it on Osborne and 16th Street. And it's really interesting to have watched that construction and see how beautiful, that how they preserved the home, but also added, uh, more space. And so, uh, more creative ways that way. I don't know if any other colleagues have any other questions? I do have a, go ahead and then I'll wait.
I want to, I want to thank all the work, Michelle. You know, I, I appreciate how comprehensive this plan is. I appreciate the effort of the Vice Chair, Bill Schill, and also Thomas Jones, uh, for all the work that has been put into this. You know, what's, what's good for, you know, I, on, on one hand, yeah, I'm not just saying this because as a Councilmember, because on, on a Subcommittee, we very much represent the city of Phoenix. On the city council and a policy meeting, formal, uh, uh, you know, council meetings. We are also council members for respective districts. And, um, the, the comment that Bill Schill made about looking at West Phoenix, I, I think that is, it's very important. It's a question that I get often out in the community. These are, uh, these neighborhoods are, you know, 40, 50, 60 years old.
These are, these neighborhoods are, you know, 40, 50, 60 years old, even, even older, and we should be looking at some of these areas, some of these homes and neighborhoods in West Phoenix, understanding that you're already doing more with less, you're already on this shoestring budget, and, you know, how do you get all these things done? And I do appreciate that, but I also appreciate that comment, and I know Bill well enough to know that it's not just a comment, and it, you know, there is some work to be done there, and it's a challenge that you're willing to take on. So I do appreciate that. I will wait for my colleague to finish before we can enter. I'm willing to make a motion.
And I have a few questions, too. On goal number one, protect archaeological resources, very, very valuable, and we are here so much because of things that began a long time ago that we ought to remember. But at the same time, in my district, we have faced issues with flooding, and so I just wanted to make sure there's nothing here that's inconsistent with, we may need to make some changes to the historic canal system to protect homeowners and their, and so that there's a balance when we are protecting archaeological resources, but that we also have to respect community safety. So could you speak to that, and if there's anything here that would be inconsistent?
Certainly, Chairwoman, members of the Subcommittee, I don't believe there's anything in here that would present a conflict there. In fact, when we do review requests, such as maybe dealing with a canal issue, you know, we do our review, and we look at ways to mitigate any type of action, such as providing some historic interpretive signage or something, that we don't lose the history, but we do realize there are times when, when there are greater needs and you can't avoid doing some activities within those historic resources. So there are ways to mitigate for that, and I don't think there's anything here that would limit that.
Wonderful. Thank you. It's probably poor form to start with something negative. I appreciate the, the hard work of the committee, and Phoenix, I think, sometimes get a bad rap for not having great history and historic, unique buildings, and that certainly is not the case, and this is definitely proof positive and proof of our commitment to that. Turn it back to Councilwoman Pastor.
So in Goal 5, page 82, promote partnerships. We are facing this currently regarding communication with our outside partners, in particular in the federal and state government. And so I would like, within the action area, I don't know if it's operation or not, I guess it would be operation, to further develop communication methods to ensure that projects outside of the city jurisdictions are shared with all preservation stakeholders in a timely manner on projects with possible impacts to the city historic resources or areas, i.e., as we're experiencing FAA. And the fact that we have great communications, or we develop great communications with SHPO, so that they can communicate to us as what's being requested, so that we're on the same page and are working, are doing our due diligence in wanting to protect our area and our neighborhoods. As I'm aware, I think my home is one of them, that my windows, I cannot double paint them, and the noise level at this moment is very high, and I wake up at, sometimes at 2:30 in the morning, listening to airplanes. So I really, I understand the issue that is going on, and so I really would like to put this language in here to at least have a communication or a dialogue that is happening with outside stakeholders. So thank you.
We ready for a motion?
Do you want to give the motion, Laura? Are we going to change anything in it?
Or you want me to add all that?
I'll move for approval of staff recommendation, plus what Councilwoman Pastor has said in the past 45 minutes.
Yeah, the additions on Goal 3 and Goal 5. Thank you.
I'll move for approval of staff recommendation with the amendments, the additions for Goal 3 and Goal 5.
I'll second it, since it was for 45 minutes.
All in favor, please say aye. Does staff, any questions about the motion? Perhaps paper copy will help.
We're clear. Thank you.
I think I'm going to pay for that.
Just, constituents should know, she's spent a lot of time on this. So congratulations to Councilwoman Pastor and staff. And now we move on to future agenda items. Anyone have any to add? All right. We have no additional cards, but would welcome any, if there's any members of the public who would like to provide final comments.
Good morning, everyone. Sheila Harris, former chair of the City of Phoenix Housing Commission. I would truly support former Councilwoman Trippkins' recommendation to look at revitalizing the current housing commission. I know people who are members and anecdotally have provided me with stories where they're still a member, but the commission never meets. So I would encourage you to look at this. It's a great opportunity for you to select people from your districts that have housing as an interest. It also is a great mechanism to provide insight to city staff from a variety of perspectives. And when I was on the commission, we had people who were realtors, we had people who were in homebuilding industry, we had people in the public sector as well. So I would encourage you to revitalize this resource, because I think it's something the city could really use and we could all benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you for your service to our city and to our state. And I think we could get a card from you before we leave, that would be one. Perfect. With that, we are adjourned.